We're going to call to order the Tuesday, July 7th, 2015 Fantasy City Council meeting to order. Please rise for the plan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lee, please take the roll.
Mayor Kenny?
Here.
Councilmember Cody?
Here.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Here.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Here.
Councilmember Gustin?
Here.
Internment City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
DPW Director?
Here.
Running Director?
Here.
Planning and Zoning Administrator?
Here.
Police Department Sergeant?
Here.
And City Engineer?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Sus and comments on the agenda-related items. Is there anyone who'd like to comment tonight's? Yes, please come forward and state your name and address, please. Time is limited, if I may.
This is me, Harry Potowski, 159 Lindsay Street. Just wanted to comment on the recycling program and the work session meeting that happened a couple of weeks ago that I attended. I think you guys have come to the conclusion that we're status quo, which I think is hopefully the right decision. I was not overly impressed with the county's presentation, I'll tell you why, for a very reason. Mayor Kenny, when he asked whether they could give us a lower price because they have additional volume to spread their cost, they justified it with, no they could not because there would be a second operator, so it would be a second operating cost with that facility. But yet, towards the end of the meeting, when they were asked whether they could operate with one facility or one location, then everyone back to revisit a lower cost structure. So, hopefully, we go status quo. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on tonight's agenda? Sign now, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items march with an asterisk around the consent agenda considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to our approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the latter portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: Approval of Minutes, Approval of Payroll, Cash Balances Report, Consideration of Adopting Ordinance Z15-04 Peninsula District, Consideration of Adopting Ordinance Z15-05 Green Infrastructure Language, Consideration of Adopting Ordinance Amendment 15-07 Chapter 606 Animals, Consideration Rescheduling the July Board Review to Wednesday, July 22nd, 2015, Notification Regarding Next Work Session, Consideration of the Conservatory of Dance Barrow Drive, Consideration of Grapes on the River Event Request, and Consideration of Salvation Army Valuing Conference.
I'll make the motion that the council take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cody, supported by Councilmember Gudsky, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Sign now, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Gudsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to new business. Consideration of a service contract with the Alliance for Economic Success. The three-year contract between the city and Manistee, Manistee County, and the Alliance for Economic Success to provide economic development services expired in September 30th, 2014. Committees from the city, county, and AES have been in discussion to renew this agreement. Terms of the new agreement have been included in the attached document. City Attorney George Saylor has reviewed and approved the contract. Proposed payments for the city are beginning 1/115th, ending the year 12/3117, a per-year amount of $46,518. At this time, council to take action. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, top of council, take action to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute a three-year agreement with the Alliance for Economic Success from January 2015 through December 31st, 2017.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gustin, supported by Councilmember Zelinski, to approve the contract with the AES. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I'm under assumption that the county is also going for a three-year contract too?
Yeah, I think they've already approved the three-year contract.
Correct. They've already approved theirs, I guess.
Is there any other questions or concerns you have?
No.
Yes, I guess, in the information that the AES gave us, they're looking at creating more low-income housing. Manistee does not need this. We need more middle-income and high-income housing and jobs. We're spending a lot of money, citywide, police, fire, taking care of some of the low-income housing, such as Century Dairs. I just don't see the need to create more low-income housing. We need more, like I said, more middle and higher-income housing.
So, I think we still need to go through our strategic plan with the AES, and we can also, you know, flesh that out. And it's not a hard document, it's a living document that we can kind of adjust and kind of focus, yeah, and focus them on.
Alright.
Okay, thank you. So, any other comments or questions? Sign now, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Gudsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, consideration of a resolution establishing an MSDVA redevelopment project area. In order to attract new businesses in the downtown area, the Manistee Main Street Downtown Development Authority wishes to establish a redevelopment project area to issue new liquor licenses. The proposed council resolution is just one step in the process. There are currently no unused liquor licenses available in the city of Manistee. If council approves the establishment of the redevelopment project area for the Main Street DDA, we'll then report on the amount of investment through an affidavit signed by the Director of the Manistee County Equalization Department, prepare a map showing the boundaries of the DDA district, and provide the ordinance that created the DDA. These documents will then be sent to Michigan Liquor Control Commission. As each new business requests a license, the city council will be asked to approve each license for a specific address in the DDA district. Licenses cannot be moved to another address. It will be a requirement of the MSDVA to keep an updated list of investment in the DDA district to submit to the MLCC as each license requests approval. At this time, council to take action to approve the resolution. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, council take action to approve a resolution establishing a Main Street redevelopment project area. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gustin, supported by Councilmember Whitlam, to approve the resolution. Is there any questions?
Yes, what exactly are they trying to accomplish here with the... Go ahead.
Patrick K. with Manistee Main Street DDA. From my understanding on this, Michigan Economic Development Corporation set up a system in which small towns could get additional liquor licenses. As it sits right now, there are no liquor licenses that are available in Manistee County for new businesses or existing businesses looking to be able to acquire a liquor license. This enables areas of high growth, like downtown Manistee, to be able to acquire new liquor licenses without acquiring the higher population to acquire liquor licenses for the downtown. The first step in this is creating a, is establishing the DDA as a redevelopment project area.
Okay, what exactly are they trying to accomplish at the Manistee?
I mean, if they want a liquor license, how is it going to be used?
This is, this right here is just the, is just a consideration to create the district, the network thing on there. Because the Manistee Marina is looking for another avenue of income for their particular business. Many hotels across the country have restaurants and bars within their facilities, and they're just looking to have another avenue of income coming into their property.
So, is this going to be a restaurant and bar, or just a bar, or...
From my understanding, it's going to be just a bar for right now. They may end up adding a restaurant later on. I've got the manager of the property, if you'd like for them to come up and give some information.
Yeah, let's hear what's going on, I think we really like to know.
Sure.
Hi there, how are you? I'm Jennifer Deegan with the Manistee Marina. As you know, in the winter, it is extremely slow. It's really hard to get people down to the downtown area. And the people that we do capture and have at Manistee Marina, we would like to keep downtown versus going out to the casino, things like that. So, we're just really trying to get more ways, want to bring more income into the Manistee Marina to upgrade our property, amenities, things like that. And one of those ways which we learned is through restaurants, liquor licenses. We have a lot of people that walk the downtown that come in, or are guests that ask if there's a menu being served, with it being an inn, or if there are beverages that can be purchased. So, our ultimate goal is to increase our revenue so that we, again, can upgrade our facility and improve it.
Is there any other question?
Okay, all they have to do is meet the 50 seating capacity. Do you actually have that?
Yes, that, and we are going to invest $75,000 into the property.
So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
No, I'm fine. In the notes, you said that you would have a facility or in the parking lot?
It's just one of the options that we are throwing around. The owner has come to the property and speaking with the DDA, we know that our Manistee River is one of our biggest assets, seeing ships, boats, things like that come through. So, we were throwing around the idea of turning the last four parking spaces into an outdoor bar. However, our main goal is to keep it inside. So, we do have a new acer shop that is going into the old Vincent's Ice Room, which is kind of throw a little wrench into the space there. But we still really want to utilize the hotel because it does have a lot to offer. We've got a 2,100 square foot banquet space that is going unused, so.
I know years ago, with Manistee Inn, on the planning commission side, we approved a development to have a roof garden. Gosh, that must be 10 years ago already, but would be nice to have a garden or a little bar up on the roof.
Absolutely, that would be amazing.
Kind of like a business south of here.
Yeah.
It'd be, nobody would have that. You'd have the, you'd have the, I'm just...
I love the idea. It's definitely something that I know the owner wouldn't take into consideration, so.
Something, something you'd think about.
Yep, we've got to get the health department in there first.
Any questions?
No, thank you very much. I do, not for you, but for Patrick. Thank you for the... Is there any, Patrick H., liability that falls back on the DDA with city for issuing these ad hoc type of liquor licenses? Or is that an investment? If the liquor license is approved based on an investment, what if that investment's not made? Are there any concerns or fallback that the city should be aware of, liability or concern in that respect?
From my understanding though, I probably turn to Internment City Manager, it might fall since I've been on heat, was trying to say when they were approving their stuff there.
The answer is no. The investment needs to be made before the Liquor Control Commission will issue the license, so that's confirmed before the license can even be issued. But there's really no other liability associated with the city.
Okay. And I read that they shouldn't do any investment until they get the approval to do these things, and that's kind of the cart before the horse thing, and I wanted to make sure there was no liability for the city to be concerned with, but I appreciate that, yeah.
Also, let the council know, we're working with Michigan Main Street Center to have design services. We have the availability to have a total of 15 architectural drawings done on exterior properties in the downtown for Michigan Main Street. It will be easy one of those to do a rendering and for full architectural side drawings for the exterior of the Manistee Marina, as it incorporates this outdoor bar, particular area as well. We'll also be bringing in the health department to make sure things all up to code and everything. Exactly what we're looking for, to be approved on that side, things before we can afford on that side.
Does this, how does this affect, like Famous Flips that is coming, they already have their liquor license out of town?
Famous Flips already has theirs. The only effect I see into the community large is there are some people that are, that if there were licenses that were still available, that weren't currently being used, that's not the case. But if there were out there and they were holding it up as a commodity, it would devalue their commodity as part of their business. In my personal opinion, you know, the liquor licenses are not intended to be a commodity. They're intended to be used as a purpose of opening a restaurant or bar. But that's the only negative drawback to this, is it does devalue the commodities of a liquor license being used to buy itself for that sort of issue. However, what's different on this is liquor licenses are exclusively just for the downtown area. They can't be taken out of the DDA district like any other license would be. And they're exclusively for a particular address. So, the only way that should actually transfer from over to another person would prove to be them buying that business, from my understanding of that. But they could not just buy it and move it across the street or move it outside of the DDA area.
So, this wouldn't have any effect on the people that are redoing the old bookstore?
No. They've actually approached me about doing a license as well. They've actually said, we want to see how this goes through. But when they come up later, next month, they'd like for a resolution to be set up to move forward on that project as well. Thank you.
Does the redevelopment project, does that gain the DDA anything other than being able to purchase days liquor licenses?
Not that I know of, no.
That's the sole intent?
And we're not actually doing any type of purchasing. What we do is create the license, we show how much investment's been done, we turn over all these documents that were Michigan Liquor Control Commission. And then from that point, it's kind of set up between the property area that's been approved by council and Michigan Liquor Control Commission. The $20,000 for the purchase of the license would go from the property area directly to the state, or go through the DDA, the city.
Is there any guarantee, I mean, is there a guarantee that they'll get a light liquor license even if we create the redevelopment district for the downtown? Or is it, if they get the blessing, they're going to issue as many as they would like?
So, we create the license, we create the other four steps that go along with creating, to enable this proposal. And then at that point, license, I mean, once you guys approve that particular location, which is in the next gen I line here, then at that point, it is, they fill out a regular application they would normally to Michigan Liquor Control Commission. They've got to prove to Liquor Control Commission that they've done at least $75,000 for the work and have a minimum seating capacity inside a business of 50 persons. But everything beyond that, from my understanding, is just like a regular license, like they would apply for in the other situation.
So, this would be a full liquor license?
It'd be a full beer wine liquor license.
And has this been done before in Michigan?
It has been done.
Or have we studied?
It has been done in other tablets in Michigan. This is the first time it's being done in Manistee.
But it doesn't use packaged liquor though, right?
It is not packaged. This is only retail sales. From what I understand, a weekly year.
It was used extensively in other communities, we can improve it.
The licensed business is engaged in dining, entertainment, recreation that is open to the general public with a seating capacity of not less than 50 persons.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you want to talk about, can I call you up today now, Patrick, if you're doing a quick tour?
What's that?
Can I talk to you today about?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to talk about that now, or wait until the next?
Sure, we can go ahead and talk about it. One thing we had mentioned before was creating policies and procedures moving forward with this program. I completely agree with Councilman Zelinski. The concept is, if a business or restaurant is interested in applying for or obtaining one of these licenses, we actually have a procedure of how this is done. And one recommendation that he had was that in other communities, they have an application process where they would fill out an application of their plan, exactly how they're moving forward. The DDA could be the initial avenue where they could forward with, and we could review it before it comes to council. And it'd be, first off, reviewed by the DDA, vetted through all of our channels, that sort of thing, and then made a recommendation to council.
Is that something you're going to implement? And this one, or on the next one then?
That is up to council. I mean, I intend to go ahead and create that, either way.
Alright.
So, I mean, the option with the council would be to, A, go and approve the district, and B, go ahead and approve this particular license. Or if the council wanted to table it to another meeting, then we can wait until we have policies and procedures, or go ahead and approve the location. And then the next, we'll have to go to the policies and procedures.
To be clear, any discussion really applies more to the next item rather than to this item.
That's my next question. How was it super regulated? Basically, prior, there was a dance club that's now, you know, that was downtown, and it was constant, every weekend there was a fight, and it was turned into a role in the run.
Aside from the restrictions on sale, it's really identical to other liquor licenses.
Three tickets they get.
Please, if you're having a role in enforcing any nuisance behavior.
The council still needs to approve each liquor license.
Exactly.
I would like to see, when the DDA would review an application, I would like to see something of, like an impact study, how it affects the people around them, the businesses around them. Also, I'd like to open up the possibility of having a public hearing, getting some pros and cons as to what people agree or disagree.
I think Chief Bachman has always been kind of counseled us along in a way, you know, he'd always review those and do due diligence.
Certainly, I mean, that is one difference on these types of licenses over a regular liquor license. Because they're not really transferable in the same way, they don't go through the same police background check that a regular liquor license would. They still need to meet all the LCC requirements, they still have to meet all the same standards. But they don't go through a local police department review the way that a normal liquor license transfers.
But if council's approved a liquor license, they could request our Public Safety Director to review it on our behalf to ensure.
Yes.
One question for the city manager. This has been done in internal city, and how did this, was it a positive or a negative effect?
I think the general answer would be a very positive effect. There was some grumbling from the holders of current liquor licenses, as alluded to. I don't know the exact number, but it must have been 20 or 30 or 40 that were issued. They've been allowed investment in downtown Traverse City, so they had something in excess of 250 available. And they would never go through that many, but the council was very supportive, and I think the community was very supportive as well.
So, with this, I mean, the applicant has some skin in the game.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
Any other questions?
Like, just a comment to Councilmember Zelinski, although I see having some guidelines for, I don't want to create additional oversight and regulation and hurdles and red tape for anybody that wants to develop or grow the downtown. We've been working on that downtown for 20 years to get reestablished, and the more red tape and hurdles we put in place, the less opportunity there will be for development. So, although, you know, I know there's a fine balance between oversight and development opportunities, we need to be very conscious of that and not create more struggles and hurdles. Because never know, I don't think you're ever going to have 100% of the people agreeing with a restaurant or a bar going in next to them, or across the street from them. We can't agree on deer control, how we can agree on where the restaurant or bar are going to go across the street and near them. So, they do think we have to be very conscious of that.
And we also talked about that today. We don't want to create something that's going to be so large and so cumbersome that people can't apply. But yet, there has to be some fairness here for everybody. There has to be a procedure that everybody can follow and everybody can apply, and follow that procedure. As far as public hearing, that information comes from a lot of other areas. I spent some time today on the internet reviewing other people's, like Traverse City, and some other areas. DDA, they have committees that spend a lot of time researching the applicants, doing an impact study, making sure it's right for the community, then coming back and making suggestions. That's all they're doing. We have the final say. Well, actually, the Liquor Control Commission has the final say, but we have a say whether it goes to the Liquor Control Commission. That's the only say we have.
Well, and the public have every opportunity to speak when there's a liquor patrol or liquor license request on an agenda. Anybody who's in opposition or comment to that would have an opportunity, just like tonight. If somebody has an opposition to the Manistee Marina getting a liquor license, they could come and voice their concern. I don't want to create another step that impedes that or adds to that. Anybody that would come before us that we've identified already, they would have to come up for us and then ask for that license.
I don't know. That's hazard of evidence for people.
Yes, I agree. I think that's a fair assessment.
I don't want to make it so cumbersome that people want to apply. I think this is just a good step in the redevelopment of downtown Manistee. That's going to help, it's going to bring, it's going to drive people downtown, so.
Any other questions, comments? Shall we please take the roll?
Councilmember Gudsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, consideration of a resolution, Manistee Inn and Marina liquor license. The preceding agenda item, council's asked to establish an MSDVA redevelopment project area. This item was approved, the MSDVA has submitted a resolution for council to approve the issuance of a liquor license to the Manistee Inn and Marina located at 378 River Street by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission under the redevelopment program. Is there a motion to take action to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion, council take action to approve the resolution supporting the application by the Manistee Marina of 378 River Street for a liquor license through the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gustin, supported by Councilmember Cody, to approve the resolution supporting that liquor license. Is there any other further discussions? Sign now, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Gudsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Ordinance 1509 Parks and Beautification Commission. The Parks and Beautification Commission have recommended that the beautification be removed from their title, and that the governing ordinance also be amended to reflect that change. The city attorney has prepared ordinance amendments to make these changes into redundant language in section 28902B. Since the amendments are non-substantive in nature, the council ordinance commission has deferred action to the full council. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next further meeting. Is there a motion to take it?
I'll make a motion to introduce the ordinance.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Zelinski, supported by Councilmember Gudsky, to introduce ordinance 1509. Is there any other comments, questions?
Any particular reason why? I mean, I don't care, but it just be Parks Beautification being a problem here?
Would you like to come forward?
Sure.
Hi, guys. Ed Tyler, I am on the Parks and Beautification Commission, and when that was introduced to the full commission, at the beginning, we feel that that is just a confusing part of our title, and that it's both confusing to people in and around our community and away from our community. We are just a parks commission, and we just recommend things, we advise you guys on what we think, and having that in our title has led to confusion that we're possibly a garden-type committee that will go out and plant flowers and trees and things of that nature, and we're not. And we think that having that in our title has actually hindered other people from coming forward to you guys and wanting to do different things in the parks as far as beautification. They think that that's already being taken care of, and it's not. And if you go around to other different communities, which I've looked up on the internet also, Roger was referring to, nobody else has anything mixed into their title with the Parks Commission, any city or township, other than the word recreation. And since that is already taken care of in the city, and we don't have any part of that, we would just as soon drop the words and beautification, go back to being just the Parks Commission, function the way that we were intended to function. Thank you. Do you have any more questions?
Well, originally, we combined it to, we did have a beautification committee, so this council is saying that we would get rid of that aspect.
We don't function any way under what the previous beautification committee was. It wasn't a commission, it was a committee, and it was combined with the commission. And we don't do anything as far as what they did bringing into the commission at all. The whole aspect of the beautification and the planting and all that is nowhere referred to in our bylaws. It doesn't function under the ordinance or anything like that. So, really to have that in there is just, it's confusing to everybody. So really, to have that in there is just, it's confusing to everybody.
Thank you.
If I can make just one other point. This past year, the Parks and Beautification Committee also established the Adopt a Park Program, which council approved. So we've had a lot of requests by different groups to adopt portions of the park or adopt projects within the parks, such as the beautification projects that have occurred in the past. So there's still opportunities for groups and volunteers to have impacts on the parks and do it through the Adopt a Park Program.
My only concern is, and I think it's been enjoyed by different members of our community, the beautification committee, I think that's before it was combined, they did like the Butterfly Garden downtown, they did that Fish Wall at First Street Beach, and those type of projects, if nobody's focusing on even recommendations, we're just not going to have.
Right, and both of those, both of those have individually been adopted through that program.
Through the?
Through the Parks Commission's Adopt a Park Program. The Butterfly Garden has a group of volunteers that have adopted that section and actively helped maintain it, and the Parks Department provides them materials and so forth.
And that's great, but my thought is, there are people, they're part of that, beautification commission was to come up with these ideas and how to beautify different areas of the city. It's great that we're keeping up with what we've done, but if there's no active, I guess it's up to council, we don't care to have a commission that's actively looking at what we could be doing throughout the city. And from what I understand, I don't think the parks, they've kind of gotten away from that, it sounds like. So it's not that I'm against that, but as a council, by dropping that, do we want to address it any other way? Or don't we feel a need?
Well, I think it could be an item for discussion at a work session or something like that. I agree, I mean, if it's something that we still feel strongly about and maybe it's maybe promoting more of the Adopt a Park Program or Adopt a Beautification, you know, project, whatever, but I think that's an item that we could revisit at a work session.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Charlie, please take the roll. Councilmember Bested?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of rental inspection service provider contract. The city advertised for a proposal for a rental inspection provider. Two proposals were received and both applicants were interviewed by a committee. Dominant interviews committee selected Spicer Group as the top candidate and Spicer Group is being recommended by the committee. The city attorney has prepared a contract for this service. The residential rental package program was established in two thousand. A resolution has been prepared that reflects the fees that would be charged by the rental inspection service provider for services under the program. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to council to take action to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign an agreement with the Spicer Group as a rental inspection service provider and further adopt the resolution amending the city fee schedule to reflect the fees and state of the contract.
Have a motion by Councilmember Bested, supported by Councilmember Zalinski, to sign an agreement with Spicer Group. Is there any questions, comments?
What is the length of the contract?
It's a three-year contract because we have a three-year cycle for rental inspections doing approximately a bird each year. So it takes us three years to get through and it's a three-year contract, so we have consistency with the inspector and with the fees. So in year two, somebody's not paying more than they would have had they had the inspection prior year.
And in the, in the contract, is there out of the city if goals aren't met?
Yes.
Any other question? Senator, please take the roll. Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Bested?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yeah.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
No.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of entering into a one-year contract for assessing services. City assessor Julie Beertley retired in March two thousand fifteen. The city unsuccessfully advertised for a Michigan certified assessing officer, level two, to fill this position. At the June ninth, two thousand fifteen council work sessions, council directed administration to contract out the service to complete the two thousand sixteen assessment role. The contract has been reviewed and approved by the city attorney. Is there a motion to enter into a one-year contract with Great Lake Assessing?
I'd like to make a motion to enter into a one-year contract with Great Lake Assessing. I'll second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Whitlock, supported by Councilmember Cody, to enter into services for Great Lake Assessing. Is there any comments, questions? It's been a long process, I appreciate the time put into it. Can you please take the roll? Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Bested?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Considerations selecting a city recycling program for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Council has reviewed options for residents to recycle glass, metal, plastics, and mixed fiber products. Options include the current program, status quo, zoning the county PA sixty-nine program or mandatory curbside recycling. Based upon its success and cost effectiveness of the current program, staff recommends maintaining the status quo and relocating the site from within the public's works yard. At this time, council could take action to select the status quo option. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Cody, supported by Councilmember Goodspeed, to select the status quo option for recycling. Is there any other questions, discussion?
Even though I know where it's at, you want to tell them where the alternate is proposed?
The alternate is proposed on North Loschesky Drive, just about a block north of the current site.
And we're going to establish some parameters around that and secure that location.
The expectation is defensive screen at security lighting and security cameras.
Thank you. We know the size of how big this center's going to be.
Not precisely, it's bigger than the current location. Mr. McCullough, do you know the dimensions?
I don't recall the dimensions off the top of my head, but I do believe that that site would give us other opportunities for larger recycling drop-offs such as yard waste and possibly Christmas trees over smaller.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Senator, please take the roll. Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Bested?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Ad-Hoc Deer Herd Committee, Compensation Commission, Downtown Development Authority, Harper Commission, Pet Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. All appointments by the mayor subject to the council's approval unless otherwise specified by statute ordinance. Nominations for council appointments do not require second. After a member of council nominates an individual for appointment, council shall vote on the nomination. Majority vote in favor of the placement of the nominee as required for appointment. The following applications have been received for the Ad-Hoc Deer Committee, which is to develop a long-term strategy for deer herd management, some rare appointment. We had six applicants. First one is John R. Berkora of five thirty-six Eighth Street, Robert Horkel of four thirty-two Cedar Street, Josh Penland eight fifteen Vincent Street, Barry Peterson five seventy-five Eighth Street, Roger Zalinski five twenty-nine First Street, and Susan Brown of five twenty-one Browning Avenue. I know on the before and other commissions, we've had to go one by one. Would it be appropriate, do we still need to do it for the Ad-Hoc Committee, or can I just make a motion to approve all the?
I think just make one motion.
Make a motion to approve all six applicants to the Ad-Hoc Deer Herd Committee.
Do you need a motion to support?
Yeah, she's actually appointed, then you need.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to support the mayor's appointment of the six applicants for the deer. For.
Have a motion by Councilmember, Goodspeed supported by Councilmember Whitlock, to approve all six applicants to the, is that you said?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bested to the Ad-Hoc Deer Herd Committee.
Much hands from the end.
Do you have any other discussion?
Yeah, so we're voting, we're approving the six or five?
Six.
Okay.
We did, we did one other applicant.
Yeah. I want to thank the applicants that got involved. I know it's been a very challenging subject from a long time ago, the former council member Horkel has been on part of it for a long time, and I appreciate the interest and the enthusiasm to get involved in that committee. I think it's an important part of what we do to manage that herd, so, thank you.
Any other? Please take the roll. Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Bested?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. There are no other applicants to any of the other boards and commissions, so just go ahead and we advertise for those. Next, we move on to notices, communication, and announcements. A regular part of each council meeting is to report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we'll hear from the Planning Commission and the Museum Historic Commission. First off is Mr. Roger Yoder, who will report on activities of the Planning Commission.
There you go, Mayor Kenny and councilmembers. My name is Roger Yoder, chairman of the Manistee City Planning Commission. My assistant, Jake in the picture. This year's report begins with requests that have come before the Planning Commission. First is an approval that was granted by Katrina and Judd Brown for architectural compatibility that allowed the construction of a detached garage that matches the roof pitch of their home at four thirty-five Fifth Street. If we can all take them. The Planning Commission granted a special use permit to Roy Henderson and Paul Foster for a communication tower. The addition of an accessory building at the site of the existing tower required the applicant to apply for a special use permit and meet the current zoning standards. A request from the city of Manistee for a parcel split of a vacant lot on the Earl Street resulted in the creation of two buildable lots. The site plan review and approval was granted through the MN Partners LLC for the construction of two duplexes and one single-family home in the Lakeview Planning Area at Arbor Village. And in response to the request from the city council, the Planning Commission worked on an in-depth review of the zoning standards in the Peninsula District from August to January. A report of findings was prepared and forwarded to city council. The review was a great process for the commission and resulted in an amendment to the ordinance. The commission has been involved with a process for certification in the redevelopment ready communities program, including the development of zoning language for green infrastructure and identifying redevelopment sites. The commission worked on a public land review and had representatives, representation at meetings for the County Recreation Trail Plan. Review of the Right to Farm Act and changes in the GAA MP resulted in draft language to permit chickens or ducks in residential districts. Zoning standards for transient housing and homeless shelters and an inventory of vacant properties owned by the city were also completed. The commission has worked on several zoning amendments this past year. The first was for changes that were identified in the report of findings for the Peninsula. The second was for the standards for green infrastructure as required in the RRC program. A public hearing for a zoning amendment that works in conjunction with the animal ordinance has been scheduled for July ninth. Work on the master plan had been put on hold while the report of findings was completed for redevelopment ready community certification. Two previous surveys resulted in less than eighty responses. A survey is needed to move forward with the plan. The county planning department is assisting with the completion of the plan expected in two thousand sixteen. Members of the commission had the opportunity to attend four workshops this year. Members continue to work to maintain their master citizen plan or certification. This past year, I was recognized by the Michigan Association of Planning for thirty years that I have been a member. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the members of the Planning Commission with a total of seventy-four years of combined service to the city. The Air Maureen Berry, Judd Brown, Dale Dean, Ray Fortier, Vice Chair, Marlene McBride, our secretary, Roger Whitlock, or Mark Whitlock, excuse me, and Roger Yoder, the Chair. Meetings are held on the first Thursday of the month and work sessions are scheduled the third Thursday of the month, September through May. Meetings and work sessions are at seven o'clock in the council chambers, and all meetings are open to the public and minutes and agendas are posted to the city webpage. And that would be it, unless there's any questions or anything else I can help you all with?
I just want to thank you for your thirty years of dedicated volunteer service. That is quite an achievement.
Thank you, my pleasure.
I'd like to thank you too, Mark, I mean Roger, for your service. I do have the pleasure of serving six years on the Planning Commission with you, and I do commend all of the efforts that happen at the, I know it's some kind of a challenging and thankless position, but I appreciate the thirty years you put in for us.
I didn't know my uncle was on. Okay? Thank you and have a good year.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Mark Federer, who reports on activities in the museum and historic district.
I'm very happy to be here this evening, speaking to you very briefly on the museum, the historic district commission, and what's been going on with that Ruskie Lighthouse out on Fifth Avenue here. So I'm going to speak to you to some free parts here. I'm going to give you a little rundown of what we've been doing at the museums over the past year, a couple of highlights. Two thousand fourteen, we had three exhibits, Dragus and Drugstores of Manistee County, Century Boat, History of Century Boat, as well as Christmas and British Isles. All three exhibits were very popular, we did, had a lot of traffic through the doors. So it's always nice to see not just visitors, but local people like to take an interest in where they live. So we're very happy with the outcome of all three of those exhibits. I myself gave about ten different lectures throughout the community last year, number of different schools, to the county meeting, not at the casino, at the library, all over the place. It was always a lot of fun and lots of questions, so it's always fun to talk about local history. Continue to write weekly articles for the New Africa of Manistee's History, also do the Daily Looking Back column, which is twenty, forty, sixty, eighteen years ago, all the stuff that's been happening in, on our community at that date and at those times. Always get a lot of calls, a lot of interest about that, so it's always a good way to get people interested in the local community's history. Since last June, I talked to you last, actually last July, I think I spoke with you last, we had approximately three thousand seven hundred visitors at the museum and about a hundred and sixty-five researchers. Now, these researchers do research on their family, their homes and properties here in the city of Manistee, as well as numerous other things, things that happen on specific dates, specific times, they kind of run the gamut there. So it's always a lot of fun to get, to attempt to answer people's obscure questions when it comes to research. We also work with the Main Street Program on different properties, as well as the Bronfield Redevelopment Authority on various projects here in Manistee as well. The two thousand fifteen exhibits, so one that's going on right now involves mortarings in Manistee County, which is an exhibit about the old highways and byways throughout the county, places in Wausau, in O'Necoma, all over the place, a lot of buildings and people that were important to those communities, as well as the city of Manistee. We also have an exhibit on local woodworkers, and then we have an exhibit on the German Christmas coming up in December. As I move forward, are there any questions in regards to the museum?
No, thank you for those articles. I found them very interesting.
Thank you.
I know I take sender write them, so.
It does, yeah. Thank you so much, appreciate that. Okay, moving forward, we're going to talk a little bit about what we've been up to as a historic district commission. It's been a busy year for the HTC. I'm just going to highlight a couple of the things that we've been involved in. One of the things- been involved in. One of the things that we've been involved in is the approval for the renovation of the front exterior of the former Salvation Army building and the former Lyric Theater building. They've done a very nice job over the past couple of months, been updating the exterior of it, which might be that there can be two commercial units downstairs and then upstairs a residential apartment up there as well. So they've done a very nice job with that, and we're very proud to see them moving forward on that building. 429 River Street, which is Lloyd and Henry's Wine Shop, approved painting on that. Looks great. 420, I got them adjustments up there. But Famous Flens, which will be opening sometime very soon, approved painting on that, and they're doing a very nice job. I think there's a couple of different things they're gonna be doing on the outside of the building, I believe. But the painting looks great, and they're moving forward with it, and we couldn't be happier about that. There are a couple of different properties that have, have continual work done on River Street. One of them is 411 River Street, which is the former Larson Insurance Agency building. Jeff Gordon is a very meticulous man when it comes to work, and he's doing a very nice job updating it. It's gonna be taking a little time, but he's getting there. There are permits issued for that building for the end of this calendar year, and we'll see how the work progresses. And we have all the faith in him that he will be able to make the building look very nice as he has so far. Another building is the address 347 River Street. There's also a permit issued for that building as well. They are continuing, Jeff, as well as Paulo, as America, are continuing to do work on the building, and so far they're doing a nice job. We just have to be a little more patient with it. But there are permits issued till the end of the year on that building. 337 River Street, which is the former H and K building. This building was, we looked at for the Historic District Commission, possibly a demolition by neglect. It was in very, very rough shape. Last fall, an interested party purchased the building, and they talked with Historic District Commission in regards to what would be the best way to button it up for the winter time. And so we gave them a couple suggestions, and they did those. And currently, at our next meeting in August, the owners of the building are gonna look, are gonna come to us with their ideas of updating the building and getting it renovated. So once again, it just takes a little time. Are there any questions in regards to the Historic District Commission so far? We also, also are looking into signage for many of the historical buildings in the district. As you know, or as I know, I guess, at the museum, people come in and want to know more history about all the specific buildings up and down River Street and in the district itself. And so we thought it would be a good idea to see if there was any interest on the property owners, to get some signage up on their buildings that would kind of tell a brief history about them. So that's something that we're looking into. And the HDC is also working very closely with the museum in order to document all the historical information for the buildings. So that's kind of a project that we foresee to be happening, hopefully within the next few years. Moving on, are there any questions? As I said before. Moving on to the lighthouse. Now, whenever I spoke about the lighthouse in the past, over the last couple of years, I always say, I don't want to be, play the part of Mr. Obvious, but I will say that again. I don't want to play the part of Mr. Obvious, but we all know that the lighthouse is looking very rusty of late. So what's going on with it? Steve Harold, who's the former director of the museum, is the current lighthouse coordinator, and he has, was not able to be here this evening, but has given me a little write-up to talk to the council about on his behalf, and the museum's behalf. The historic structures report was done earlier this, earlier this year, or excuse me, began in 2014, and that was on the basis of the State Historic Preservation Office, who recommended that we have this report done that will give us top to bottom idea of everything that needed to be fixed up with the lighthouse. So that was done last year, studied last year. They went out there and measured everything and looked everything over. On the report, we almost have the report completely in hand. We have an estimated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to paint the lighthouse. We almost currently have that in hand. It was our belief that we would be able to start painting at sometime this summer. However, we had a deadline of June 25th for all the stars to align with the State Historic Preservation Office and National Park Service. They weren't all able to align. Now, if we get started on painting the lighthouse later on in the summer, we all don't know what the weather's like. Very, very questionable, especially as you get more toward the autumn. So we, since we didn't hear anything back from them at our deadline, which was June 25th, we have pushed the painting of the lighthouse to 2016. It is the museum's belief, it is Steve Harold's belief, that by April 15th of 2016, we will have a painting contract out about so people can bid on it and so on and so forth. And hopefully by next summer, we will be in, we'll have the lighthouse painted. Now, we also have questions about, well, why can't we just go out there and get a couple of guys and some ladders and paint the darn thing? Well, we can do that because there are regulations that none of the lead paint can get inside, or get in the lake, in Lake Michigan. So it will have to be draped off, it'll have to be scraped off. It is our belief that there'll be a four coats of, well, three or four coats of epoxy paint that will provide a durable surface for an estimated four to five years of protection. So that's what we're looking forward to in 2016. It was when the museum signed the concession agreement with the city, we looked at it as a five-year plan. That will be the conclusion of the five-year plan in 2016. And it's our belief that next summer it will be painted and be looking really nice. We also did a 3D laser scan, well, I didn't, the museum did it, but there was a 3D laser scan done on the museum, on the lighthouse. And so we have all of that. It's, it's a great tool for people who aren't able to tour the lighthouse, aren't able to get up the ladder, or even go inside. So it'll be applied to the museum's website at some point in the future, so people will be able to get a 3D view of the entire lighthouse and what it looks like. It's very neat. Are there any questions in regards to the lighthouse at all?
The painting, is that going to just be for the lighthouse, or is that intertwined with catalog too?
That will, to my belief, that is just going to be the lighthouse. There is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to paint the lighthouse, and the other hundred thousand, hundred thousand dollars that we're still raising funds for will be devoted to structural issues. There'll be some rough issues. There also needs to be actual electricity that goes out there. The light is solar powered itself, but for people to go inside, there needs to be electricity to each level of the lighthouse, and currently there is not. So there are odds and ends that will need to be done in order for it to be safe for the public to go into, and that's what the other hundred thousand dollars is for. But currently, we, we, we are nearing the estimated hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars we have that will be able to paint it, so.
Has it been thought to lighten up the catalog? Kind of like Holland, Great Avenue?
Not that I know of, but that's certainly something that could be talked about at some point in time. It'd be tempting to see, I think, personally. Any other questions?
I'd just like to comment, again, I've attended a couple of your, all your lectures on your, that you've done throughout the community, and I really do appreciate the twenty, forty, and sixty year.
Yeah.
It's scary now that I look at the forty and fifty year ones, but yeah, it's, it's great to see those. It does remind you of the times when you grew up in this community, and I do think that's valuable, because that oftentimes gets lost. And I appreciate all the efforts you have at the, at the museum as well, so.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
I have to say, Mark, that you and your staff did a fabulous job with the exhibit over the fourth, mortarings through Manistee County.
Thank you.
I found that just educational, brought back a lot of memories.
Thank you.
You guys have done a wonderful job.
We have a very great staff there, so lots of good volunteers too. Thank you so much.
I'd like to reiterate the same, I think Mark does a nice job.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Excellent.
We're lucky to have you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next we move on to concerns and comments. Citizen comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizen intent shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. So anyone who'd like to comment? Yes?
I want to publicly thank the city council for paying a lot more attention to the budgeting process and, of course, giving us some money for local streets. That was, was one of my biggest concerns that I had this year. I keep thinking about, though, we can't drop the ball. We gotta keep the momentum going. So I keep thinking about ways we can bring more revenue into the city. So I started a very labor-intensive process of looking at all the properties that are owned by the city right now. And it occurred to me that between perhaps Denise and perhaps Jeff McCula, who has an excellent background in surveying, because I've worked with Jeff before, that they could probably quickly, well, maybe not quickly, but rapidly go through the list, the properties that the city owns, and identify those that could possibly be sold, so that we could bring more money into the city. The market is changing. It's changing for the better in real estate, and I think it might be a really advantageous time to take a look at those properties. And a lot of them are just small pieces, but there might be something there that we can turn around. That's my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
One immediate comment here, right? Gary Potelski, 159 Quincy Street. Just a few observation comments. I want to go back, I think maybe two, three months ago, Up North had a news run on Manistee where it said Manistee's out of crossroads. And I think the summary was, Manistee actually probably needs the plan, it needs a long-term plan. One of the comments made there, however, was, was again, the need for more low-income housing. I think Manistee's at a very critical stage right now, and as the moderate income individuals are unfortunately passing away, if our future is to bring in only, to attract only low-income families, it would be a major problem here. Secondly, I wanted to just comment a little bit about the redevelopment meetings that took place in the identification, identifying various buildings around Manistee. First comment goes to, I call it the old Milliken buildings. That's how I remember the fixed building. I really am concerned breaking that building into several small spaces. If Manistee does that, the downtown area has turned its back and has given up on attracting the medium to large size store. And I think that is what's needed to attract locals back into the city, is some decent size store that used to exist, or similar to existed in downtown Manistee. So many other properties that are on the list, though, for redevelopment, I want to comment on. The one being the Roadway Inn, that property's sold, some work's being done out there now. I'm not sure what the city is doing as far as coordinating or talking to those new owners out there, as far as understanding what the plan is. I have talked to the owners. One concern I have is the name, the plan naming it the Manistee Inn. Well, I'm not sure how that conflicts with Manistee Inn and Marina, but any name such as that, and where people drive a tow, if that facility isn't totally redone to some satisfactory level, is unfortunately going to be, and attract, viewed as a problem of Manistee again. And I'm not sure they are planning on doing the whole property, maybe from the far north side. Also, that property, I think, is critical for the condominiums across the street. Whatever happens there is gonna either help attract buyers for the condos, or once again, keep them away. That property is on the list. However, I think that just a simple fence, picket fence with some landscaping in front of those unused foundations would drastically improve the visibility of that building. And this kind of leads back into beautification. I have a concern there is, is if Manistee doesn't have any type of active beautification committee, once again, I think that's a disadvantage, because if we can't attract, can't address a lot of the blighted properties, some simple beautifications to various areas may seriously help the city, especially along 31. So I'm a firm believer that US 31 is the first impression, the last impression visitors and tourists have in Manistee, and that area really needs to be addressed to clean our city up. So I also want to talk about what Linda said about the streets. I'm concerned there too. It looks like we have decent funding for this year. I'm a little confused with the number. I think it was 417 plus eighty-three thousand additional oil and gas funds, but then there's some, I think, reclassification of re-farthing funds. So I'm not sure if at six hundred thousand we're at. But my comment is, we have funding for this year for a little of the streets. We've budgeted funding next year for some major streets, but then what? You know, let's, I think we need to act now and get a plan together for two years down the road. Thank you.
So anyone else would like to comment?
Thank you, Mayor and the commission. My name is Michael Wood. I own a building on 20 Hancock Street, and I'm also the president of the Bayview Condominium Association and the president of the board. My comments will be very brief this evening. I'm the one that rehabbed those condos and took charge of it over the last five years. We put three hundred thousand dollars in the roof to stop the leaking. In addition, pardon me, we settled with the development company and took a second position and zoning restrictions on the vacant land to the north of the building. Unfortunately, we've been in lawsuits over that for the past year and a half. We just settled the easements and got the property back that has been deeded to us since 2005 in Judge Thompson's court. Concurrent with that, we're working, trying to get the, settle down the old pizza building, as was in the paper, and Marvin and I talked about earlier this evening. That building was condemned by the building inspector right before he left employment with the city. Construction can't continue on that until plans are supported and use are supported to the zoning commission, the planning commission, and to the state building inspector. I'm disappointed, like a lot of people, that it looks the way that it is. It was supposed to come to us in the legal settlement, but it was sold without, out from under us. We have a second position. We also have a deed restriction on the water front that joins that building for residential only. I'm giving the city the assurance that we're doing everything possible to move forward on settling the lawsuits and getting something done with that building one way or the other. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor Kenny, members of the council. Thank you for your service for our city, and we appreciate all the work you guys put in. I'm, I'm here because I want to talk about recycling. I've lived in the area almost twenty years. I come from the Muskegon area, and when I first moved here, I was pretty disappointed to find out we didn't have a very effective recycling program. There was some talk about, you can try the curb side, but you probably won't remember to pick it up, and, you know. I'm a big believer that recycling's an important part of environmental health, and I think environmental health's really important, because if you want to have health, what do we have? Manistee's a beautiful county. I don't feel that our current recycling program is very effective. I wouldn't use the word successful. I would really love to see Manistee have a successful and effective recycling program. And I, I think this possibility of a contract with Iris has got a lot of positive potential. I think it gives us access to grant money. It would help raise the recycling quality and behavior of our county if we, as a city, got on board. I'd just love to see you revisit that subject and see if we can improve. I mean, I'm pretty patient, because I've been waiting for a while. I do my best to recycle, but I don't know what's recyclable there. I know it's a mess at the places where we can drop them. It's frustrating. I don't think it's... I think it's important, and I'm certain. Would anybody like to ask any questions? Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Dave?
Joy.
Joy Smith. Joy Smith, 164 Harrison.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come?
Patrick Kay, Roseanne Manistee, Main Street DDA. Just want to let you guys be aware of a really, I think, to me, I think it's kind of monumental. We have a lady named Margot Pellegrino that'll be paddling from New York through to Chicago and down to New Orleans. She is currently coming through the west shore of Lake Michigan. She's stopping off in Frankfurt tomorrow evening, and will be coming to Manistee to, Thursday evening. We have her coming down to the Manistee Municipal Arena. We've got a night stay for her at the Grand We have her coming down to the Manistee Municipal Marina. We've got a night stay for her at the Ramsdale, dinner for her at Bluefish. But she is paddling from New York all the way down to New Orleans to raise awareness for clean waterways, drinking water sort of thing. So if you get a chance, come down. We're gonna be looking at, having her come in around four o'clock, four or five o'clock on Thursday. I think she'll have a lot of great, interesting things to talk about. It's taken her a little bit longer than what's originally planned. Coming across from Leland, it's been a lot more choppy on the waters than she was originally planning. She's only just about forty miles a day paddling. So if you're interested, check out our Facebook page or our, we have a River Street Google group. We've been updating people on. You can also probably Google it by that for information, I don't know if you can ask me after the meeting. But she's got a GPS tracker on her boat to let you know exactly where she's coming in. But we're trying to have a really nice welcoming committee for her when she comes into the municipal marina and then have a nice stay at the Ramsdale and down to Manistee.
Patrick?
Have you contacted like TP seven four or nine ten about this?
I've contacted all the local news stations. My News twenty-six will be coming out, the News Advocate will be coming out. I'm gonna try and strongly encourage nine and ten and seven four to come out as well, but just as big a group as we can as possible. I think that'd be a really neat thing, the fact that she's doing this all across the entire country or across the area. She came through the Hudson River, through Gary, and so with her coming through into Manistee, it's gonna give us some really nice public recognition and the fact that we are doing above and beyond, take care of her coming in. I'll be contacting the US Coast Guard and sheriff's office to see if we have an escort for her coming into harbor. But this will be a big kind of recognition, recognition for us, I think it's gonna be good for our community. I encourage everybody, if they can, to come out for this visitation, hopefully.
Does anyone else? Move on to officials and staff. Sweetheart?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Trump's media agent?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Steve Turner?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Honey and Zoe?
Nothing, Your Honor.
DPW?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Finance director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Sergeant?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
That's where we're going?
Yes, I'll be gone July fourteenth and twenty-one. I'll be in Canada fishing. I won't be available.
Want some of those ones?
Yes, I would like to thank everybody that worked on the park, the new Rotary Park. They call us volunteers that work so hard, it's my special. DPW workers, everybody did a great job. Glad to see their job. Thanks a lot.
I love the fireworks. They're awesome, Sharon. I have heard complaints, but I love them.
That's where we're going?
It looked to be, the new Rotary Park was a grand success. People were there every day, fifty, sixty at a time, so good job in Manistee for doing this.
You want to go to stuff?
Yeah, I've got a few. To piggyback on the Rocket Park or the Rotary Park, very successful, tons of people down there all weekend long. I want to thank Jeff and his crew. The beaches, both First Street and Fifth Avenue were outstanding. I had family in town all week. Fortunately, I had the week off and spent a lot of time as a tourist in Manistee and I think the city looked great. I want to thank Sergeant Schmeling and his team. Very well orchestrated for traffic control before and after the fireworks and throughout the week and, you know, I thought they did a great job. The Parks Commission, the parks looked great. Again, we played in several different areas. Staff, again, this was, in my opinion, a very, very successful Fourth of July weekend and week. So thank you all for your efforts. It's tough to pull that off and I think we did a great job. And that's all I have.
I'd like to second tell some of the good stuff, comments that I think our purse, DPW did an awesome job. Also on top of that, I'd like to thank our chamber and the Forest Festival Committee. There seemed to be a lot more people in town this year, enjoying a lot of the activities, including the parade. I think everyone did a good job and I appreciate all the volunteers who came out. I think it went off very well. And that's all I have to say?
All in all.
Okay.